All of those issues and the information. Obviously, people are aware of the project and aware of the information, and that's wonderful. It's on Route 32, right adjacent to the school, land zoned by the foundation. We started this process, my purpose, just for a couple of minutes, is to outline procedurally where we've come, where we've been, and where we're hoped to go. But we started the process in about January of 2009, for those that may not be aware. Spent approximately two years working with various aspects of the community, working with the site, before we finally let up to making an application. We received extensive input from town levels, village, county levels, the Corps of Engineers, DEI, et cetera, to get to the point of the plan that you ultimately see before you. Our intent, actually, was to spend those couple of years upfront and to design the project and to minimize impacts by design. You will be ultimately the judge of how well we did at that and give us your feedback on it. As an overview quickly, the basic project is 42 acres. There's an additional eight-acre parcel that through the evolution of the application process and the seeker process was added into the equation so that we could locate the sanitary treatment facilities in a better location. If we were to locate them on the site, they probably would have been down in a more environmentally sensitive area, or they were originally proposed down there. The eight acres allowed us to put it into a better location. And as you'll notice in the DEIS, also provide possibly some future benefits, if you will, to the community, some positive benefits to that sewer treatment facility. The property, the basic property, the 42 acres, is zoned RV. The additional eight acres is zoned R1. It's housing, again, to be built on the foundation property through a lease arrangement. There's 10 student-appropriate buildings proposed for the site. That's 228 units with a total of about 696 beds. Also, there is a faculty-appropriate housing component to it in the form of three buildings. Each of those buildings will have approximately eight to 10 units, for a total of 24 to 32 units of faculty-appropriate housing as well on that site. We submitted the original application to you on November 11th, 2010. That application included a site plan application, a subdivision application, and an application under the UPD ordinance of the town, which is where we originally thought would be the appropriate vehicle, if you will, to go through the process. Further discussion after that submission into the following year, and as we were preparing the DEIS, on advice back, again, more advice from the community was to follow a conventional zoning RV application on the site, which we have described in the DEIS as the preferred alternative moving forward with the project. Going with the RV direction on the site for conventional zoning would require us, from a site plan standpoint, to get two variances. We made a lot of interpretations over months with the building inspector in town and legal advice in town, and have been able to design a project that would only require two variances under that RV zoning, one for an approximate five-foot height consideration and one for building separation. All was done in the consideration of providing more green aspects to the design of the project, consolidating the design, et cetera. So quickly, you know where you are in the seeker process. January 24th, you made a positive declaration that put us in motion to scope the project. You chose to publicly scope the project and ultimately, through the January time to April 11th of 2011, provided us with an approved scoping outline through the public process. We submitted the DEIS to you on June 11th, 2012. You accepted that DEIS on September 24th of 2012. That was an approximate 100-plus-or-minus day review time for acceptance. First of all, excellent job of that. It's a large document. It was a 42-page scope. It was a very thorough scope. And to be able to get through the process to this point of accepting the document and having the hearing in 100 days was appreciated, but also very thorough on your part. We now are in the public comment stage. We all know that. I would note, for both of our purposes, it just happens to be something personal to myself, that when we made some seeker law changes in 1996 to improve the seeker process, that's a point in time when scoping was beefed up a little bit as a process. Basically, that speaks to the issue that if you choose to publicly scope, you put a scope, then we provide a DEIS, and you act on it, that to some extent limits new issues. It doesn't forbid them, but if we have new issues, it's incumbent upon those that bring up the new issues to provide the proper documentation as to why they should be issues for you. We would be more than happy to respond to any of those that come in. But it was something I worked on at the time and feel very strongly about, is that when you publicly scope, that's the playing field that we have moving forward. Lastly, and to finish, and go on with what we're here for tonight, prior to even submitting, we knew that site features such as wetlands were a very high priority to the town, traffic, drainage, environmental setting, environmental impact issues, were probably the top five lists that we knew coming in that we tried to address. You further fortified that with the scope that you gave us. But I also would like to point out that as a result of all of what we've done, there are some very positive impacts that have been presented to you in the way of expandable water and sewer facilities that are now in the design process. We feel we've used the latest in green infrastructure and best management technologies associated with the DEC mandates on the site, and we have assured you that moving forward, we will utilize a green building standard that we are recommending to you, which is a nationally-approved standard, the NCE standard, moving forward. So with that, I would only say that our opinion is that it's a good project for the community, obviously. It's an important project for the school. We hope that by design, we have minimized the impacts to your satisfaction. We're now in the 670th day of the seeker process, which is, I only say that because you, as lead agency, are up against taking a hard look at the project, and we feel that the process to date has certainly done that, at least today. Just lastly, from a timing standpoint, from our perspective, we are, after four years, we feel that we're in the tunnel and hopefully looking at the light at the end of the tunnel, and it's not a freight train coming at us, to quote any number of individuals on that issue. But with that, I think you can appreciate, we have a cycle with the school to deliver housing to them. And that cycle, given the fact that we'll probably go through a 14-month-plus-or-minus construction period, once we get the okay to proceed with construction, if we back that up, tends to require us to look at it approximately in April of 2013, start of the project. I just wanted to mention that to you for record, that as we have come to this point, and we now look at our schedule going forward, for us to be able to perform for the college, we hope that we can work with you, however necessary, and the public through their comments, to get to the point where we could look at a spring construction time. That's our wishes. Thank you for your time. Thank you for allowing me to introduce ourselves to your neighbors in public, and we look through their comments. Thank you.
For the record, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing. Thank you, Tom. All those in favor? I have a list of names. There's a sign-up sheet up on the top. If you didn't see it coming in, there's an opportunity for you to sign in there. I'd ask you, when you stand up and give your name and address, we are transcribing it, and we need it for the record, and I'll go in order on it. I'd ask you to stay within the time period. I'm not going to put a clock on it, but we're trying to keep it, because there isn't quite a few people that like to speak. So, without further ado, the first name on the list is, and if I screw up your name, I apologize right now. I will do that, probably just about everybody, except for the first person, Brenda Dow.
Good evening. My name is Brenda Dow, and I'm a SUNY New Paltz employee. I joined the school on February 27th, and I'm presently staying at 5 Ulster Street here in New Paltz. I own a home in central New York that's two and a half hours away from the campus, and I'm in a transition of trying to relocate from there to here. When I took my position at the college, which is an excellent match for me, and I'm very happy to be here, I soon realized how incredibly expensive the housing is here. One of my colleagues described it as upstate wages with downstate home prices. So it's been a very big challenge for me to try to transition from my present location down here, because I do own a home, and it's very difficult in this market. When I tried to look for housing, I found that many of the one-bedroom apartments were as much or more than my mortgage and extra where I'm coming from. And so what I decided to do is, I couldn't put my house up for sale there yet, but I needed a place to stay here. So I started looking at what people in the village call student housing, figuring I would stay here during the week and then go home to my home on the weekend and get it ready for sale. I was really surprised at what limited options students have for student housing in this community. I toured various places during the month of February. It was impossible to find a location where I can even get a student housing room. For those folks who aren't familiar with student housing, a lot of these are older homes where they rent out one room, and everyone who lives in the building shares a kitchen or a living room, and it can be quite crowded there. I had folks that would even refuse to even show me living space when they found out that I was an employee rather than an enrolled student. Fortunately, just before I started work, a room opened up in one of the student housing locations, and it was because the pipes had burst, and the student who was living there had to move out, and they were making repairs. Unfortunately, I was able to get that room. I think there are a lot of well-intentioned people in the village who understand that student housing is a real challenge here, and some of them try to make this as much of a home as possible. But I can tell you, I'm not the only person who is looking at student housing. During the time that I was in the student housing where I was near Main Street, I was surprised to see one of my colleagues come in, who's a single mother, who has a clerical position, and told me that she was really in a financial situation, because she couldn't afford the gas to live outside of the area, because gas is so high. So she was trying to get a place in the village so that she could be within walking distance, and she had a young child. And I thought, I'm by myself during the week, and this can be a challenge. How could it be for a mother with a child to be in this kind of a situation? So that was quite an eye-opener. And also, during the time that I was living in student housing, I got to talk to a lot of parents who were coming through, trying to find housing for their students. Some of these folks are 18, 19 years old. They're transferring from a school after one semester or one year, and they can't get into a residence hall. And they're walking through the place where I'm living, and I can kind of see the parents going, is this really the college experience where I want to send my son or daughter? Some of these people are 18, 19 years old. And my niece is getting ready to look at colleges, and New Paltz is an amazing school, but I would have to advise my sister about, you know, sending her here if these are the options that she has for, you know, an 18- or 19-year-old for housing. So having seen it from both sides as a faculty staff member who wants to move this area and relocate, the need for housing to help folks to get acclimated as they transition from their residences there to here, this Park Point project is sorely needed. And as a person who's lived with students, lived in student housing, and talked to parents who are going through these facilities, trying to find out what's best for their son or daughter when they're making a decision about the college experience, it's not just the quality in the classroom, but it's the quality of experience in terms of where they're living. It makes all the difference. My recent location was near Main Street, and it was great, because I could park my car in the overnight lot across from the administration building, and I could walk everywhere. And I just moved over to Ulster Street, and I'm sharing a place with a retired couple. And I thought, this is great. I'm only a mile away. I can still park my car and walk. Unfortunately, that part of town has no streetlights. I have to walk for three blocks in total darkness before I get anywhere where there's streetlights. So now, even though I'm only a mile away from campus, I'm driving from one side of the village to the other with my car, which, as we all know, adding traffic is not something that we want to do here in New Paltz. So I can't offer my support enough for this Park Point project, not only from a student and a parent perspective, but also as a new employee who wants to make their life here in the village. Thank you.
Jerry.
Good evening. My name is Jerry Benjamin. I've lived here 44 years, and I live on 19 Prospect Street in the Village. And I'm employed by the college. I'm here in the community because the college is here. I went into the Army and I came back here because the college was here. And I've had a better life because the college brought me here, and I think I've made a contribution to the community because the college is here and because it brought me here. So I have a deep commitment to the well-being of the community and the well-being of the college. And I think that we have a synergistic and positive relationship between the college and the community, notwithstanding some of the rough edges. And I also think that we have a mutual dependence. I think that we have a wonderful plan for Park Point, and I could talk about it in detail, but a lot of people are going to do that. And I want to be respectful of the time limit. So I'm going to try to contextualize this discussion a little bit in a broader frame. I want to remind my neighbors and the board that we've seen in Ulster County what happens when the major employer in a community leaves. We saw it in Kingston. We saw it in Ellenville with Channel Master going back and trade and the hotels. And you can go down and walk around in Ellenville sometime and see what it feels like compared to what it feels like to walk around in our downtown. There's a great bakery there, and a pretty good theater, but I'm not aware of a lot of other attractions without prejudice telling. So the point I'm making is that the health of the core economic activity is essential to the health of the community. Everybody thinks that the college can't go out of business, you know? It's a state college. It's been here forever. We're very proud of how long we've been here. We get better and better every day in the quality of what we offer. Lots of people want to come here. Lots of people apply here. Then I go across the bridge and I take a look at the state mental institution that's now empty. You know, the state sometimes goes out of business. The paradigm shifts. The way of dealing with problems shift, the demand shift. And we're in a fundamental moment of challenge to higher education. I just want to bring that forward through the consideration of the board, because it's very important considering this project, although it might not have been obvious as a consideration. Read the newspaper. People are writing articles about, asking the question, why is there any need to go to college? College is expensive. What are you going to get out of college? We, of course, believe you get a lot out of college, but the matter is forward. And then, take a look and see that tens of thousands of people are taking online courses all at once from superstar professors at MIT and Harvard, not yet getting academic credit, but they're soon going to find a way to do that. And these schools are investing tens of millions of dollars in this alternative paradigm for the delivering of higher education. And then, the third fact, the demographics of our state is shifting. The number of college-growing people in this state is declining. That's why schools are closing in Kingston, because there's fewer younger people, and those younger people are the population for colleges in the future. So the competition rises to get people to come. We hope people who aren't in conventional ages will come, but there's competition. And it rises. So fundamentally, we're challenged. And I think it's, to our credit, if I'll be modest, in that we're trying to face the challenge with a commitment to the residential college experience in New Paltz. In other words, if you were in the casino debate, rather than the Park Point consideration process, you'd say, we're doubling down on higher education, in residential higher education, and we have a corporate sponsor who's helping us do that. We're saying that we can be competitive with a residential college in the 21st century, even though Harvard and Stanford and MIT are giving courses to tens of thousands of people across the globe over the internet. Now, I think we're pretty smart to do that, because we've got a great community, we've got the kind of idyllic opportunity for education, we're the right size, there's a lot of things going for us, but we have to provide the experience. Either we provide it, or we don't. And we just heard kind of an interesting presentation on what happens when you don't provide the experience. Somebody tells their sister, don't send your kid to New Paltz. Now, so I think this is fundamental. This is fundamental to supporting the core economic activity, and what I bring to your attention is that it's being done with enormous sensitivity to the values of the community. You look at this plan, which is challenging, I know, and you think about the values of our community. The plan has been respectful and considerate and responsive, without going into detail that you already know. Now, one more point, and I'll really sit down and listen a little bit. There's some idea that a private company building something for a public college is Private companies build our buildings now when we put them on the campus. Private buildings operate services on campus, private companies operate services now. In fact, my values are that private enterprise is a good thing. I know not everybody embraces that point of view. But I just published a book, and it's too expensive for anybody here to buy, so I'm not advertising the book. But there's an article in there by a guy named Henry Steck from Portland. He's a SUNY professor. He makes the point that there's no real distinction anymore between public and private higher education, because they're so intermixed in the way they're financed and the way we pay for. We complain about the state not giving us enough money to meet our needs. So this idea of public being good and private being bad, or private being good and public being bad, is not a core question, especially with this company that has such a track record of service to students and such a good record of service and such a sensitivity to student needs. I think what the question is, is how can we maintain a residential college opportunity at our current size? We're not talking about building a college with more enrollments at the undergraduate level. How can we do that at our current size? Where do we get the money? Where do we get the investment? Where do we get the capacity and still meet the values of the community, proximate to the campus, walking distance, minimizing traffic impacts, green design? And it seems to me, you know, I'm calculating two, almost three years in the planning and discussion stage, and going forward, we're doing this, the college is doing this, and its partners. You know, it's legally not a college project, but it really is fundamental to our future at the university. So I think of it as a project that benefits both the college, by design benefits both the college and the community. I'm hard-pressed to understand why this is such a controversial matter, except that I have experience in community life. So I urge you to give positive consideration to this project. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Niall, Kristen?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Donald Christian. I have the privilege of serving as president at SUNY New Paltz. One of my addresses, obviously, SUNY New Paltz. I reside in 29 Cedar Ridge Road, also in New Paltz. Park Point is a campus-initiated project that will fulfill long-identified needs for student housing, apartment-style housing. It increases the opportunity of our students to participate in a rich campus life, and as you've heard, we're also very interested in helping our new faculty and staff establish roots in this community rather than other communities. So I want to share here a few of my perspectives on the importance of this project to the New Paltz community and to the continuing success of SUNY New Paltz as the only public four-year college in the Hudson Valley. Each year, about one-half of the students who graduate from SUNY New Paltz came here as transfer students, mostly from the Hudson Valley. Since about 2007, we have not been able to provide housing, on-campus housing, for those students. So they reside five, 10, 20, or more miles away. Our most recent economic impact analysis of the impact of the college shows that our students spend about $100 million annually. That doesn't include tuition. Housing more of our students here would result in their spending more of that money here, rather than the other communities where they live. And we know from our surveys that well over half of those students, our current transfer students who live elsewhere, would reside here if affordable housing were available on or near the campus. We also know that many prospective transfer students either don't apply to New Paltz when they learn that we can't provide housing, or they apply, they're accepted, and then they choose to go elsewhere where they can live on or near campus. We hear every year of prospective transfer students who come to New Paltz to visit leave in tears when they learn that we can't provide apartment-style housing on campus. It doesn't escape our attention that almost every other SUNY four-year institution has on-campus apartments or townhouses for students, including those that are our strongest competitors for students. And I would echo Professor Benjamin's comments about the competitive era that we're in for surviving and thriving as an institution. And obviously, those students who go elsewhere spend their money in those other communities, not in New Paltz. The traffic study commissioned by the developer showed no net impacts of Park Point, the Park Point project, on traffic. Our current transfer students who live in other communities obviously drive to campus and from campus in the evenings. Housing those students at Park Point would mean that they would be walking or biking to campus rather than driving. Our campus master plan includes moving much of our parking to the periphery of the campus. And what that will mean is that there will be fewer parking spots closer to classroom spaces than in the Park Point project. So the issue of these residents driving to campus will be largely moved. And for these reasons, I'm puzzled by the criticism that I've heard about the conclusions of the traffic study. Living in Park Point will also not be parallel to living in any current off-campus rental unit. The land on which Park Point will be developed is owned by an affiliate of the SUNY New Paltz Foundation, which exists for one reason and one reason alone, and that's to support college and our students. In some sense, this is almost a technicality, not to see Park Point as an extension of the campus. We're pursuing this project as a partnership for the simple reason that the current financial state of New York will not allow a state entity like SUNY New Paltz to borrow enough money to do this project ourselves, along with renovating our aging residence homes. So our choice is very clear. It's to develop this project in partnership with a private developer or not do it at all. And Wilmerite has shown itself to be an absolutely top-notch partner with other college campuses where it's built and manages student housing, doing things like cooperating with the financial aid office, for example, to support students. And that's something that other rentals in New Paltz, rental owners in New Paltz, don't do. We certainly appreciate the demands that a college campus places on community services, and we, as a college, invest, as a good community partner, must. For the last decade, the college and the New Paltz Police Department have had a mutual aid agreement, and the college also provides in-kind support for the fire department and the rescue squad in the form of fuel. Assertions have been made that the Park Point project will make major new demands on New Paltz Police. Page 291 of the DEIS quotes New Paltz Police Chief Joe Snyder as stating that the university police department will be the primary respondent for police calls at Park Point. A letter from UPD Chief David Dugotkin of August 27, 2012, attests to that fact as well as to our intention to continue that MOU between university police and New Paltz Police. I have a copy of that letter here from Chief Dugotkin for your information, if you'd like it. Additionally, on that theme, I would point out that the blue light phone system that will be installed at Park Point will be connected to the UPD notification system. So I appreciate the opportunity to share a little bit of information about my perspectives on this project that is so important to our students and to the future of SUNY New Paltz. I believe that the vitality of this community is very closely tied to the success of this college, and I hope you'll support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Oback?
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Brian Oback. I live at 23 Mill Rock Road.
If you have written comments, please submit them in. If you're reading from them and you're finished with them, it helps us for the record.
You don't want these.
I don't want those. Okay.
I am employed at the college.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Brian Oback. I live at 23 Mill Rock Road.
Can I stop you for just, if you have written comments, please submit them in. If you're reading from them and, and you're finished with them, it helps us for the record. If you-
You don't want these.
I don't want those.
Okay. I, I am employed at the college. I'm a faculty member. I also have chaired the Campus Sustainability Committee for the last few years, and, but I'm speaking for myself. Although I will say that the Sustainability Committee strongly endorses this project primarily for its environmental benefits, most of which have to do with reducing commuting and thereby lowering our carbon footprint, the ability for students to, for students and faculty to walk or ride bikes or take a bus to campus as opposed to commuting from far distances, as was described as the only alternative to many students and faculty now. And I must say this, that I've, I've opposed many developments actively, and, but I'm not anti-development. I oppose what I think are bad developments, and I think you folks and others have made good decisions about that. But, but this is a good development, and I support it. I will offer a few suggestions about ways that I think the Board and the developer could possibly improve upon it from an environmental standpoint. The major benefit of this, obviously, is that it's going to, from an environmental perspective, is that it's going to reduce commuting. We want to take as many measures as we can to ensure that that's what's going to happen, that students and faculty will be walking, riding bikes. And on, on those grounds, I'm not, I think that there's opportunity to reduce the amount of parking that is, that is included in this, or at least to include a separate charge for those who have cars and want to utilize parking. And that could be offset in rents to reduce it so that non-car users aren't subsidizing parking spaces for car users. You know, the general principle of environmental reform is you want to discourage bad behavior and encourage good behavior. And, you know, providing parking in some kind of all-included manner just encourages car use. Secondly, we want to make walking, riding bikes to the campus as attractive and desirable as possible. You know, I'm not sure what could be done, but I think it'd be a good idea to think about how that pathway, how that connection could be made attractive. The college has done outstanding work at making attractive entrances. I sometimes go out of my way to take the Mohawk Walk on the campus because it's beautiful. And if we want people walking from there to campus, we should think about how we can make that attractive and safe. In addition to having frequent bus-riding opportunities, I'm not sure what the specific plans are for how the bus is going to come through there, how frequently, but as often as we can make that come through, as conveniently as we can, that would achieve our, our goals of reducing car use. In terms of the units themselves, I believe, and I, probably people here could correct me if I'm wrong in the developer, that the, that this is going to be a sort of residence hall style, all utilities included arrangement. That's not optimal from an environmental standpoint. We've all been to the pay-one-price-all-you-can-eat buffet. It sort of encourages overconsumption, sometimes with negative consequences. Well, the same is true for energy use. You pay one price, it's all included, you have an incentive to, you know, crank up the thermostat to 80 and sit around in your, in your shorts and t-shirt in the middle of winter. I would encourage consideration of individual unit metering and billing, just like in regular apartments, other apartment, private apartment complexes. Lastly, the developer has committed to a, a green building standard, which I think is, is excellent. It's different from LEED, which is the green building standard that's used on state property. There are some advantages and disadvantages to the alternative. It's, it's, it's cheaper, it provides more flexibility, it's not as strong as LEED on some of the energy components, but it is a credible standard. You know, I was skeptical at first, but I researched this, it's a credible standard. Some even suggest that it's more appropriate for this kind of development than the system that the state uses. But I would encourage that it be, that it be used, that it be officially certified, that it be certified at least to the level that would have to be done on campus if it were a fully public project, which is the LEED silver level, and I assume that the green building standard silver level is about as equivalent. Although the campus has just recently announced, we have one gold standard building, and if we could strive for something like that, that's all the, all that much better. I had also hoped that the project might include some renewable energy, and I'd encourage the, the developer and you folks to think about that, too. But overall, from an environmental standpoint, this is a good idea. It is going to, you know, decrease our overall carbon footprint. It's going to provide all those benefits that others have suggested about providing students with, with opportunities to get a residential experience, to provide some faculty with some affordable housing. So I encourage support for it and to think of ways to make it as environmentally sound as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave Rooney?
I'm Dave Rooney. I live at 131 Scent Drive in New Paltz. And for the past 10 years, I've had the privilege of serving the campus community as Vice President for Student Affairs. And one of the areas for which I'm responsible is student housing. In the 10 years that I've been at New Paltz, we've never once met the demand for student housing. Our, our freshman students are guaranteed housing, and they're guaranteed that for the time that they are enrolled on the campus. In the 10 years, the number of students that have stayed for four years has increased dramatically. What happens when that occurs is that fewer people go out the back door, so that leaves fewer rooms available at the front door. And starting in 2007, as President Christian announced, we've been unable to meet any demand or request for housing from transfer students. That becomes problematic when you look at what the mission of SUNY New Paltz is. We pride ourselves on being the campus that, that offers a residential campus experience. In a nutshell, what that means is that we see learning taking place beyond the classroom. And that often takes the form of student leadership opportunities on our campus and involvement. And that means that in order to be involved in those things beyond the classroom, you need to be proximate to the campus. For students that come to class and leave, chances of them coming back are much less than the students that live in proximity to the campus. As an example, we meet monthly with what I would consider the highest-elected student officers on campus, and we generally meet with about between 12 and 15 of them a month. We took a straw poll at our last meeting and asked how many of those students in the room came to us as transfer students? And one student raised their hand. That indicates to me that though we offer and pride ourselves on being residential campus and offering those kinds of approval models to go with being residential, for many of our students, a good 40% of them, we don't, we don't provide the opportunity for them to participate. 60% of our freshman population approximately come from New York City, Long Island, and the southern part of New York. 40% transfer. That means that 40% of our students generally not have the opportunity to participate in the kinds of things that we pride ourselves and make ourselves successful on. More and more students want to come here every year. That's a statement to the quality of what we are, we're offering at New Paltz. And I think something like this development allows them the opportunity to bring those students who want to be a part of a very successful formula for a state college to come to New Paltz and participate. We are really the only true residential campus experience at Republic University between New York and Albany. And I think there's, there are many reasons, and if you've watched the campus over the last decade, decade and a half, you've seen the great strides we've made. It's now time to stop, in a time of increasing competition in higher education and people questioning the value of higher education, it's time to move forward and offer more opportunity than our lesson. I thank you for your time, and I encourage your support.
Thank you. Bruce, still there?
Good evening, and thank you. I'm Bruce Zillner. I'm the Dean of International Programs at SUNY New Paltz, where I've worked for almost 27 years. SUNY New Paltz has long been proud of its status as the most international of SUNY comprehensive campuses. We try to prepare our students to work in an increasingly global economy. For an institution of our type, we send a significant number of our students abroad. For those who cannot study abroad, we try to bring the world closer to them. Our students have the opportunity to engage with international students from over 50 different countries. In a calendar year, our office, the Center for International Programs, serves over 1,000 international students. At any one time, there are over 600 foreign students enrolled in our various programs. As our international reputation has increased, we've been approached by a growing number of universities and organizations abroad regarding academic collaboration that will result in an increase in the number of international students on our campus. We've reluctantly had to decline many of these opportunities because we're unable to offer more housing to international students. For many prospective partners, this is a deal-breaker. Approval of the Park Point project will enable us to welcome more international students to our community. The presence of international students benefits us in many ways, but let me just highlight the economic benefits. Several years ago, during international student orientation, one of the managers of the TARDIS store at the Poughkeepsie Galleria called to tell us that they experienced their largest one-day spike in sales on the day we brought several busloads of international students to the Galleria for their first U.S. shopping experience. In a similar vein, I doubt whether New Paltz would be able to support four Japanese restaurants, as well as Greek, Turkish, and Indian restaurants without our sizable international population. Annually, NASSA, the Association of International Educators, performs a statistical analysis of the economic impact of international students. For 2010-11, the last year for which data is available, it was estimated that international students and their dependents contributed over $20 billion to the U.S. economy. During the same period, these students spent $2.4 billion in New York State. What does this mean to a community like New Paltz? In 2010-11, the 670 international students attending SUNY New Paltz contributed an estimated $13,860,000 to the local economy. With the construction of Park Point, we can enroll and house more international students who will support our community and local businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. David Eaton?
Good evening. Thank you. My name is David Eaton. I'm the Vice President for Enrollment Management. I became part of, oh, and I live at 137 Riverview Portview in New York. I came here 31 years ago, ironically, as the rest of us like poop. And I don't live in New Paltz because coming in here in 1981, with a family, two children, I could not afford to live in New Paltz. And that is a theme that has repeated itself for the decades that I've been here. I have, in my career, worked in four universities in three states, Michigan, Nebraska, and New York. It's the first one that I've been associated with that did not have apartment-style living for either its faculty, students, or its staff. And that has been a problem that I think has pottled us somewhat for the time that I've been here. I'm no stranger to this room either. In about 25 years ago, I was part of the Joint Town-Village Housing Commission. And we worked for a couple of years, employed external researchers to help us with this project, used our own data, and determined at that time that the demand for housing by the university vastly outstripped what the town and village could supply, particularly in student housing, but in faculty-staff housing as well. And at that time, we were encouraged very strongly by the town and the village to continue to build housing. And we kept our side of the bargain. We built, beginning in 1997, we built the first residence hall, followed by another residence hall, and we reclaimed residence hall space that had been repurposed for academic reasons. And we ended up adding about 600 beds to our inventory. At New Paltz, one of the things that we've learned over time is that success creates its own problems. We've been very successful. We retain our students at rates vastly above those of our sister institutions and peers across the country. And when you close the back door, it creates problems in terms of volume. And, and that's really what started driving this. The other thing that has occurred is we have become a stronger institution, attracted, I think, very, very capable, academically capable students, is that we have, we have not grown in our head and heart of enrollment, but what has happened is that we have grown in the number of full-time students. In the early part of the, this century, we had about 1,900 part-time students. Today, we have about 500. So it's really full-time students, and the full-time students are the ones that drive the need for the kind of services we're talking about, particularly the housing services. We do not plan to grow either. We don't have the infrastructure for, for academic facilities, and we do not have, it would take billions of dollars for us to really legitimately grow as an institution. The problem is, is that we cannot service not only our staff, but critically, we cannot service our students. Again, as, as I reiterate and said earlier, 40% of our students are transfer students, many of them from the Hudson Valley. Many of these students, they're very capable academically, they're, they're very competitive students, and they come here many times deferring the first couple of years of, of a four-year residential education for purposes, sometimes economic, sometimes to stay home with family, but they fully intend to take advantage of a residence experience, of residential campus experience. And they find that they cannot do that here. And it is a traumatic, it is very traumatic for them, particularly when we are the first-choice institution. So what, what literally is happening is we are disenfranchising 40% of our undergraduate population and making them second-class citizens. And I think what, what really makes that even more, makes that more troubling is that for the ones that come here and make that sacrifice, the educational experience that they're getting is less than what either they deserve or what we are capable of providing. And the thing that stands in the way is our ability to bring them into the campus community. Park Point would allow us to do that. And I, I encourage you to support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob?
I'm Bob Cook. I live at 26 Hawk Hill Road, just south on 32, off of, between 32 and 208. I'm naturally not associated with the faculty or administration of SUNY New Paltz. However, with that said, I've already kind of passed my comments forward a couple weeks ago, but I'm more concerned not with the fact that we need the housing, because I, I accept the fact that there's housing that's needed, and, and I'm not really opposed to that. My biggest concern was making sure that when we end up adding the housing, we're not doing anything that we look back, you know, five years from now and say, "Oh, jeez, why didn't we do that?" Or, "Why didn't we do this?" So there were just a couple of comments that I ended up bringing up, as you'll kind of read. One is, I saw in the documentation that they're looking for the pilot, applying for the pilot program. And there's other apartment complexes in New Paltz that house college students and the like. And yeah, I understand that, you know, there is, this is going on to property that is under the SUNY Foundation, but in many ways, it's still part of a private corporation or whatever. So when I kind of look at the pilot, the whole payment in lieu of taxes, well, as a taxpayer here, and we all know what our taxes are like here, I hate to see anything, you know, this seems to be a golden opportunity that we're adding some, some building, some structure here, some housing, some, some financial-type benefit. This is a good opportunity to rake, to rake in some of the, the property taxes and, and like. So, and that, and only even to make it somewhat fair for the other apartments that are in the community as well. So that was my one concern, is I don't want to see the pilot stuff. I'd like to see some tax revenue coming into the community. The second thing was really just more of a question, is I was trying, trying to study the maps or whatever. I see the, the water, it's all kind of nicely manicured off the process or off the premises. And then looking at what's coming out of the sanitation treatment plant, I can't see where that water goes. And I'm kind of in a housing development that if you end up looking at it, frequently when we have heavy rainfall, there's some low-lying wetlands, and they frequently overflow. There's, I think, a couple neighbors here that have experienced, you know, any kind of major rainstorm, there's flooding issues. So, you know, it's great that it's all kind of being directed, but I couldn't tell where it's being directed to. And if it's getting to that wetland even quicker now because it's taken these paths or whatever, or what's coming out of the sanitation treatment, if I don't know where that's going, if it's somehow going into the wetlands, it seems like we could end up having more problems. And once again, maybe it's all directed off in a different direction, but I couldn't tell from the maps. And that's all I got.
Thanks, Bob. Okay, thanks, Eric.
I'm Put Corners Road, 84 Put Corners. I can't read her, read the name.
Fran Seelman?
Oh, Frank.
Frank.
Frank, I can't read your writing. Where are you, Frank? There you are. Where are you, Frank? There you are.
Outface.
Okay, thank you, Frank.
My hands are sore.
Thanks. Eileen? Okay. Erwin Spurder?
That's close enough.
Close enough? I know, I told you, I was, sooner or later, and you were the first up. Go ahead.
Good evening, everybody. I think it's...
Could you get name and address for the record?
Oh, sorry. I'm Erwin Spurber. I presently live in Gardner, 142 Brunswick Road. Previously, I lived for over 20 years just a block or so from the campus at Two Lookout Avenue in the village of New Paltz. So I feel, given the fact that I've been employed at SUNY New Paltz since archaic times, I can tell you I'm a New Paltzer, even though I'm technically and legally, I'm paying taxes in Gardner. Okay. That said, I'd like to address a couple of concerns about this Park Point project that I think have been given short shrift, and this is a problem that involves public policy that needs to be addressed somewhere, and since no public agency seems to take the problem as seriously as it needs to be looked at, I feel the Planning Board is probably the best place to direct this. And that has to do with the catastrophic problem, the reality of the Lyme disease epidemic, which is, as I'm sure many of you know, quite rampant here in the Mid-Hudson region. Why does that have anything to do with the kind of developments along the lines of the Park Point project? Well, if you take a close look at the kind of the geography, the layout of the wetlands, the ponds, and so forth there, what you immediately notice is that the proposed project is going to be smack up against woodlands. Now, I'm not trying to say that it's a bad idea to increase affordable housing. God knows, it's an urgent need for this community, and many, many students will view it as a marvelous help in their daily existence. So I'm not trying to denounce the idea of something along that line. However, I don't believe that there's been any meaningful recognition here as to how and why the Mid-Hudson region has become increasingly recognized as something amounting to ground zero in our nation for Lyme disease, particularly Ulster County. We now have a more serious problem with this epidemic than the towns of Lime and Old Lime and East Lime that I visited many years ago when the disease was first recognized, and I'm going to give you a very, very brief rundown as to why this kind of project needs to be looked at much more closely and thoughtfully, I believe, than it has been so far. Okay? First of all, everybody, when they get Lyme disease, feels that it's a bad luck, they've been bitten by a deer tick, the tick infects them, they go to the doctor, and if they have very good health insurance, once in a while, the health insurance outfit, the HMO, is going to be willing to pay for the treatment. However, the problem is that when you have what's called checkerboard development going on, when you have habitat disappearance, habitat destruction, all the predator animals, the foxes, the coyotes, the owls, the rattlesnakes, all the predator animals that normally keep rodents, especially mice, down in terms of population growth disappear because they need a lot of room to roam, to hunt, to find their mate, to raise their young and protect their young. And once that habitat gets either wiped out or disrupted, the fact is, that's the end of the predator population, and then the mice are free to visit your backyard, your front yard, your attic, your basement, and when you take your kids or your cousins, your nephews and nieces to the yard to have a picnic, they get bitten by a tick. My point is this, that something needs to be done so far as ensuring that you get appropriate hydrogeologists and wildlife biologists, not under the contractual terms of the developer, and not provided by the DEC or some agency that's already made a foregone conclusion that development is in and of itself a good thing. You need to have people who are independent specialists doing this kind of work, and frankly, I have not seen any evidence of that happening. Now, it's most unfortunate, in short, that one development after another comes into play in this region. This is considered an ideal target investment area for those in New York City who no longer want to sink their money into the bond market or the stock market, and so this is now in the crosshairs of heavy-duty investors. What we need to do, and do this as a community, is insist that careful and rigorous and independent, that's the crucial part of it, independent analysis goes forward to see what's going to happen to the owls, the coyotes, the rattlesnakes, the other predator animals that slowly but surely are being driven out of existence here in the Mid-Hudson region. And if we don't do that, we will continue to see a problem, by the way, that impacts the welfare of our students and everybody the students know. Any, I can do this here, and it'll take one sec. How many people in this room have either had Lyme disease or know someone who has had it? Okay, I think you can all see the reality of the problem. And students get Lyme disease, too. They like to go hiking, they like to go climbing in the mountains, some of my best students do that. The fact is that we need to make sure that when they come to this campus, they not only have decent housing and opportunities to enjoy the wonderful academic environment we provide for them, but they also spare the tragedies of this disease. Right now, this is not being addressed, and I would urge the Planning Board to take this very thoroughly into account. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy Weiss? I won't even try the last name.
Two out of three, very good.
Okay, well, I stopped when I knew I couldn't go any further.
I am Dr. Andy Weiss Bartzak. I'm an environmental toxicologist. I live also at 142 Brunswick Road in New Paltz, sorry, Gardner, the mail address to New Paltz. Very confusing. I have three topics I want to talk about: soil, water, and sewage, briefly. This project has quite a few acres that were used for orchards, which means that they were sprayed heavily with pesticides, starting with heavy metals and going on to the chlorinated hydrocarbons of the modern era. So there were 10 samples taken from soil in the drip line, that is, under the trees. However, once water comes along, it takes the pesticide, it takes the pesticides, and they go down through channels, and they go down to the lowest point. So over the decades, the pesticides, whether it was lead or arsenic or some other nasty creatures, you can't just sample under the trees. There are other places that might be hotspots. Now, I also wonder, they talked about just the top three inches of soil. The chlorinated hydrocarbons and heavy metals are absorbed, that is physically associated with organic material, but there's a limited amount of capacity. And if there were enough pesticide sprayed, or however they put them on the apple trees, they could have over, been more than the limitation of those first three inches. So I worry about the fact that I figure they just have to take all three inches, and then the rest of it may be all right. I would like to see them check in the most probable heavy concentrations further down in the soil, because any rainfall can then reach, even though these pesticides are not very water-soluble, they can be carried on soil particles, and like PCVs in the Hudson River, they can also be carried in low concentrations in water to somewhere else, such as into the drinking water. It appears that they're going to be sinking a well into the groundwater here. In the groundwater, I'm wondering how, from where it's recharged, and whether it's at risk that the water, the rainwater that comes down or that travels to the ground, might pick up some of those pesticides that are there, or from surrounding orchards. We have a lot of orchards around here, and I don't think any of them are organic. So there are pesticides still being applied to farms and to orchards around here, and I would wonder if some of them might get into the groundwater that the people who live there might be drinking, because once they have done their analyses, they probably won't do them again. And my last point is that with the sewage, or wastewater, as it's called now, I wonder if they consider rebeds, constructive rebeds. There is no, very little chemical input into constructive rebeds, and there is much less energy needed to run rebed. In an area like this, there might be enough land to have a constructive rebed. And in the town of Lloyd, there is one that was constructed with some total lighting on Route 9W and has been working. Now, that, of course, is for a very small number of people, but that's a possibility, that it costs about the same to set up, but it's much cheaper to run, and it's much better for the environment than the chemical input we need for a traditional wastewater treatment plant. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew, yes. You won't even guess. Mike W Y R.
Don't worry about it.
Don't worry about it? Okay.
Yeah, I think that's me. Witekka, does it look like W I E, maybe?
It could be.
Well, I don't know how many other Mike Ws there are. None of them seven O's. I was, my name's Mike Witekka. I currently live in South Side. I'm a recent alumni of SUNY New Paltz, and I was looking over the draft environmental impact statement, and I saw something of concern. In Appendix C, I found that the arsenic levels tested in the soil were approximately four times as high as the federal regulations and approximately five times as high as the state regulations. And I thought that was something of concern. I mean, I just was wondering, like, what would be done with that? I mean, if it's organic or inorganic arsenic, because it accumulates into the body, and in low doses, it's okay, because the body's pretty resilient, it's pretty good at filtering out stuff, but in high doses, over a long period of time, it can shut down the liver from functioning, which can, you know, lead to fatality pretty much, you know, so not a good thing. And I was also in the Appendix C, they don't seem to test for arsenic in the water samples, only in the soil samples. I thought that was a little questionable, safety. Those are my biggest concerns. There is other things relating to how workers will be affected working on the soil, just like long-term protection, what, you know, basically, just the whole thing, I think it should be addressed more. I don't know if other people were looking into that very much, but I kind of set off a lot of warning signs. I'm just wondering how this whole thing will affect the construction process, if there's more, you know, things that will have to be done with this, if they're just going to put soil on top of it, and if they are going to, like someone said before, test, you know, way beneath the trees, too, because I think that would be quite essential. Those are my largest concerns. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Catherine?
Um, don't worry about it. I'm a senior speaker.
Uh-huh.
Thank you, though.
Okay. Katie?
Hi.
There you are.
Hi, I'm Katie Austin, and I live at 7 Grand View Lane, New Paltz. I just transferred here my first semester at SUNY New Paltz. I transferred to La Pramal Island. As my president was saying, there is a large amount of transfer students that are, I guess, torn away from the campus when we first come. I know when I first came out of high school, looking to desperately come to New Paltz because I loved it so much, instead of staying at home for two years at a community college. Then I came back up here after I was accepted and was heartbroken and almost left in tears because I couldn't live on campus. And that is the one thing that I wanted to do, which I desperately wanted to live on campus. I wanted that experience, to have dorm, to live in a residence hall, and to be around other people who are students just like me, looking to have the college experience. And living off-campus, I do live with three other girls, and they're wonderful, but we do pay $700 about that a month. We pay for our utilities, our basement floods every time it rains. We just found out we have a leak in the, in the tub pipe thing, water thing. We can't use the bathroom. Our landlord kind of doesn't pay attention. Her husband's in Florida, so we can't help. And it's very hard to just be up here dealing with all this. Meanwhile, I could be living in a place like Park Point where I wouldn't have to worry about these issues so much, and I wouldn't have to worry about paying for utilities on my own, dealing with an annoying cable company, or an annoying electric company, or all these bills, and how to fill up a propane tank when you know when it's done or not, whatnot, or fill up an oil burner, or how do we stop the guy from coming to our house asking us if we want oil when it's full? It was wonderful to get trick-or-treaters, but I know they get that at the campus, too, because they do the same all the time. But I'd also love to be near campus, so, or on campus, so I could essentially get more involved. I am, when I came here, I did get involved a lot. I know I'm on the, the, um, the Senate?
Academic Senate.
Academic Senate. And I'm looking to get more involved after this semester. I know I'm trying, my friend just started up the transfer club, we're trying to get that going, because we know that there are a whole bunch of other students who are having the same issues as us, trying to get more involved, trying to get up the ladder, and just wanting to be on campus. So this would help us a lot. And I know I'm not going to be here, but, well, I'm hoping I will be here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Fay?
Um, I'm Kelly Fay. I currently live at 6 Hasbrook Place. I kind of looked at the plan a little bit, and I was just wondering if this is supposed to be kind of student housing, why it's, you know, got, for the two-bedroom units, there's two bathrooms, like, it just seemed a little excessive, like, there's no doubt, I was a transfer student and was really upset about finding out I couldn't live on campus, but I think that more dorm-like and more condensed and, you know, more, that sort of idea would be effective, too. I don't think it has to be quite as, like, luxury as what I interpreted to be. Having my own bathroom is a dream I never would have. You know, you're on a hall, you're sharing a bathroom with a hall, you know, that's a college experience, not, you know, having your own in your room. So that was just one of the things that I was a little bit concerned about.
Thank you. Mary Kastner?
Yeah.
Hey, uh...
I'm Mary Kastner. I live at 64 Mill Rock Road in New Paltz. I came here as a student in '67. I graduated from SUNY New Paltz. I live in the area in Gardner and Casey, a few years each, and was drawn back to New Paltz and eventually got a job at the college. I am an employee of the college at this time and have been for almost 32 years. I have to say that I really can't say much more than a lot of the other people have said about the college. They're much more articulate and knowledgeable about some of the issues facing the college, but this college and this community together can't be separated, in my mind. I debated whether I would present myself as a towns person or a college person. I'm involved, you know? And my son went to this college as a transfer, and it was sad for me to see him, you know, go to school and come home, go to school and come home, go to school and come home, and not join any clubs, and not have an experience that could have really enriched him even more, because I had that. I came here and I lived on campus, and even though I left the residence halls to, you know, roam up and live in town and be in an apartment, within short order, I couldn't afford it, and I had to move to Gardner, you know? So all of that together, to me, is, it's just, I just want to put my voice to support for this project because I know it means so much to so many people, and I can see what can it can do.
Thank you. Mike Whitek?
Oh, that was me, yeah.
Oh, I got you, I got you. Wow, we skipped a couple there. Okay. I got you. All right. Liz Clough, C L, okay.
Yeah, I'm Liz Clough. I'm a fifth-year student here. I've been here for five years. And my concern is with the image of New Paltz. The image of New Paltz and many of the buzzwords and articles that you'll find is green and sustainable, and I just would like to know if this is actually legitimate, especially concerning this project. I'm concerned with the discrepancy between image and reality, because I, myself, as a student, was attracted to this school because of, as I said, it being... because of, as I said, it being, um, produced as green and sustainable. But when I came here, I was in fact very disappointed in the lack of sustainable efforts in the dorms and buildings, particularly energy consumption, how we deal with heating and cooling buildings. Um, I'm concerned for the future students flocking to the school for its green image only to find that the campus newest infrastructure is not in fact as sustainable as it can be. Um, I, as I have experienced, because the campus as a whole, it's easy to throw the term green around and to still cut corners and not legitimately keep up to the standards. Um, that being said, I encourage more housing in this town. Um, I also had an extremely difficult time finding housing. I had to settle in a house um, that was filled with flat mold, lacked fire alarms and had landlords that lived in North Carolina that barely helped us. And I paid up to $700 a month for that. So I really do know that there is a need for housing. Um, I cannot stress enough that need and students need better housing. So, um, so they will buy into this Park Point. So that's why, why I'm concerned with it. How is it fair to attract students to a shiny new available building if it is not in fact keeping up completely to the green standards and then causing more health problems?
Thank you. Rebecca Berlin.
Rebecca, hi.
Hi, okay.
Um, so I, my name's Rebecca Berlin. I live on campus in New Paltz. I'm sophomore here at SUNY New Paltz. Uh, I have a few concerns with this project, especially environmental concerns. People were talking about how the environs were being outlandered and how a lot of pesticides were sprayed on the soil. Um, reading through the environmental impact statement, there really didn't seem to be that much detail about what would be done about those toxic chemicals. So that is really a worry for me. Um, I think one idea was to spray the soil with water so that wouldn't, it wouldn't be kicked up into the air so that students wouldn't breathe it in and come into contact with it and so that construction workers wouldn't come into contact with it. But I don't really think that's sufficient. I don't think that would really be a good enough way to stop people from coming into contact with that soil. And also if it is gonna be moved somewhere else, where is it gonna be moved to? Is it gonna be moved to somewhere else on campus? Uh, is it gonna be paid for to be moved somewhere else? Those are some questions that I have about it. Also, um, I really do think that the soil and the water should be retested by a professional um, that is like unbiased, that would climb and really take a good look at it. Because, uh, you know, the, the statement said, oh, this is okay, this, this will be safe. But as Mike was saying before, the arsenic levels are very high. So that doesn't really connect to me while I was reading the, uh, the statement. Also because this is a private development company, I want to know what sustainability rules they will follow. I know that it was mentioned before what rules they would follow, but I do know that because it is a private corporation, they don't have to follow the same rules as SUNY follows. So that frightens me a bit. You know, whether corners will be cut. I know, uh, SUNY is using this company because it's gonna be a lot cheaper. But is it gonna be a lot cheaper because corners are being cut? That is something that I would like to know about. Um, also, I don't think that, when I was reading it, I think I read something about how the school won't, uh, benefit from the students coming or whatever until forty years from now when the company will hand over the, the project to SUNY. So I want to know what is this building gonna look like in forty years? Is this building really sustainable? In forty years, are we gonna even want this to be a part of our campus? I don't know. Um, also, I really do believe that there's been a lack of student input. I've talked to a lot of students on campus and no one really knows what this is. No one had any idea that it was being built and it's kind of seemed like we were being told that it would be built without having our input, without being asked, what do you think about this? Or what do you think if we had this at, at, at the project? I really feel like there should be more student input and the fact that I go around and talk to my peers and no one even recognizes the name, that puts up a red flag to me as to why is this so secretive? Um, I'm also afraid that it could polarize the student body. If this housing really, like, I'm, I'm wondering if the housing really will be more affordable because right now to live on campus, it's really expensive. I'm moving off campus next year because it's too expensive for me. My friend, two weeks before coming to school this year, had to, in an emergency, move off campus because she can't afford to live with the prices that on-campus housing costs. And if this building does cost the same or even more, like I know the newer building, uh, I think Lenape or Sofas, costs more money than living in the other building. So if it costs even more than that, that's gonna block out a whole area of students that just can't afford it. So I'm afraid that it could become this elite part of the town where people who can afford it can live there and then students like myself and a lot of the friends that I have, it's not even an option for us. And we can't use those same facilities that would be there with a gym, like a clubhouse that they're proposing to build. And then the students that are living there, they're not gonna come to the town for food. They're gonna go to this clubhouse. They're gonna use the facilities that are in this area. So I think that it actually could take business away from town. I mean, there would be more students, but they'd be in this area secluded part of New Paltz, not really interacting as much with the campus, not really going into town as much. So that is definitely a concern that I have. Also, the sewage treatment plant that's gonna be built, um, well, there's gonna be a sewage treatment plant built and I read somewhere that eventually it would be turned over to the town and that also a water, um, facility, plant, water treatment, I'm not sure which, would eventually be turned over to the town, which sounds like a great thing. But what if it's turned over the town, to the town and there's problems with it? It's turned over to the town so the town has to upkeep it. The town is gonna have to pay to fix the things that are going wrong. And all of a sudden you've got a whole new burden, a whole new financial burden that the town has to take care of that the school doesn't have to take care of anymore. And then I guess my last point, uh, well, my point was, does the town have the funds for that? And also will the fire department be able to handle seven hundred new people on, uh, in this community? That's a lot of people. And it was brought to my attention today that the fire department is all volunteers. So, I mean, you can't really just, I mean, I guess you could try and draft some new volunteers, but seven hundred people is a lot of people to take care of. So I don't, I don't know if the town can handle that. But I really do agree that new, uh, housing is needed. Clearly, new housing is needed. I just don't think that this is the right way to go about it. I don't think it's sustainable. I think that there are plenty of other ideas that if you ask some students, we could give you guys and we could work something out together rather than just being told exactly what's gonna happen. So, that's that. Thanks.
Thank you. John Pearson. There you are.
Hi, I'm John Pearson. I live at sixteen Howard Street in the town of New Paltz. Uh, my property is adjacent to the, um, the orchard where the water supply is coming from. And my concern is, um, the wells that are being drilled into the same aquifer that I use and my neighbors, I think I have three, four neighbors that are directly affected by this. That's my only issue.
Thank you. Keep aware of that going forward. Emily Sullivan. There you are.
Um, I'm Emily Sullivan. I am a student at SUNY New Paltz and I live on campus. Um, I have some issues with Park Point despite the fact it's definitely necessary and I agree that, um, housing is a crisis. Um, it's indisputable. Uh, however, I don't think that, as we mentioned, our voices are being heard in the planning of this and, um, I'm, I'm not, I, I won't speak for everyone, but not everyone wants to live in really big homes that are industrial and bright and sparkly. And I mean, obviously we want something new that isn't moldy, but we don't necessarily need something, another pool and another fitness center because we have one on campus that we can use to life with simply. And places like Lenape and Sofas, uh, as was also mentioned, if you have the ability to consume too much energy, you probably will. I'll walk into Sofas and it'll be freezing cold and that's, I mean, sure, it's hot outside, but I don't need to be wearing a jacket in the building. And I just think that's a bit unnecessary. Um, a lot, there are, I find a lot of unnecessary things in the plans. Um, there, as I said, a fitness center, why can't we use one that Lenape has? Cause there's one there too and that's closer than the AWC. But I think that would save not only energy, but space, same with the pool. And that whole entire clubhouse, I find, um, uh, unnecessary pretty much. Because, I mean, you could get a grill and that would be just as, just as effective as having a, an entire patio with a built-in grill. Or, um, studies why, are there lounges? I don't believe there are lounges. So could there be lounges, little individual, uh, buildings? Um, you said that there are going to be ten, uh, ten buildings for students. And that takes up a lot of space. If you look at that, that's quite a big bit of land, twenty-three acres. Um, could you perhaps place a couple on top of each other, build a two-story home instead of a three-story home? Um, I know that you've cut down on your side bin quite a bit and you tried, but, uh, four stories or a basement or, I, I just feel like that's a lot. Homes, it feels like a retirement home if you look at the graphics and I, that's not comforting to me. Um, I was almost forced to live in Lenape, okay? And a lot of people actually don't like their experience there. And I, I demanded that I move to Shango and I had a great time. I loved, uh, proximity to the city. Uh, this is middle of nowhere. Like, I mean, pretty, pretty far away, like Route thirty-two. Sure, I could just go down and then hit Main Street, but then you're walking down Main Street and even I feel uncomfortable walking down to New Paltz. Uh, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna walk on Route thirty-two all the way there. And it was mentioned that there should be more, uh, attractive biking and pedestrian ways to get to the campus. I completely agree, uh, that is necessary. The way that it is developed right now, I feel, does not support the sustainability and, um, overall diversity of everything because it just seems like it's just what it is. And we, there's a change, there's no exception, there's just this format. And that's only because we haven't asked for our opinions and we don't know that, that this is what we want, but we do want something different. And I don't, you need two bathrooms with me and my friend. I'm, I would love to share a bathroom with my friend if that means I could save gallons and gallons and gallons of water that we don't even have. And it's, the environment is as crucial of an issue as like decreasing, uh, and higher education. I mean, you can't just do that, uh, we live on this, or yes, we need to be educated, but we need to be alive. Should be educated. Uh, quite frankly, a lot of people overlook the fact that the social aspect of everything can just completely overrule the foundation of what life is. Um, there, um, a lot of suggestions have been thrown out for keeping, like, for, um, development, but more of a co-op type homes or just big homes, uh, that are just homes. They're energy efficient as well. I definitely agree that every, a lot of the energy and mitigation of environmental sustainability, like that's good, you're, you're on the right track. And definitely the not leave but leave thing was mentioned, like I, I looked into that and it's, it's just, it's great, grand. But it's, it's also a size issue. You can have a billion, uh, earth lights and it's still a billion. Why can't you have half a billion? I mean, it's, it's a good, it, there's just more to be done. Um, again, it's, it's very attractive to everyone because it's what's necessary. Uh, but a lot of people don't know that they can change it. And so even if you had a much simpler layout, people would still live. It would be less to, it would be less money to build, less money to live in and the utilities would be much more effective. Uh, the utilities, the way they're set up, as was said, are not a good idea. Uh, there should, you should have to pay for how much you use to, so, for, if not for anything, just to be service. It might, and we don't need to include companies from outside places. It could all be through the school and school and get their money from that, but it definitely needs to be regulated per utility. Cause otherwise it's just a mess. And it's, frankly, we cannot do that to, listed, this in the overall. Um, there hasn't been, many from the D I S, there, there weren't many options. There was alternative E and that took up a mere paragraph of the entire, I don't know where someone got forty-two pages, but I think it was five hundred pages. And, um, so that one paragraph took up as much space as the paragraph that said, the alternative is we're not doing this. It's either alternative E, we're not doing this at all. And so that's a bit strange to me that you couldn't think of a couple more, like, things to put out there. I heard perhaps that there was going to be something by the rail trail, um, and there would be green roof on it. I mean, that's something that we should look into at the very least, um, onto, oh, no, not very least. I do that. The, that's something we can also look into. Um, there, the efforts we're making are good, but there's still not truly deeply rooted in sustainability. There's still an economics and there's still an, um, profit and there's still a specific view that is being overlooked. Um, uh, we need a design to minimize impacts. That's a quote. Someone said that. Good job. But we need a design to minimize impacts, um, much more than is actually there. I'm pretty sure I think that's everything, but, um, the fire, we mentioned sensitive earth is almost extinct. It's a, it's a, it's a wetland, uh, so maybe can't build up, but maybe you shouldn't be building there at all. Uh, there's many more problems with the land, but that's at least one of them. Um, sewage treatment plant by my school. But, um, I think that might improve everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Jane.
Lisa Jones.
Jones. There you are.
Lisa Jones. I live at nine Gilbert Drive in Hyde Park, New York, and I work at the college. I've been here for thirteen years. When I originally moved to this area, I did look for housing in the New Paltz area and was not able to afford anything. So I ended up living in Poughkeepsie and I now live in Hyde Park once I got married and have kids. But my office at New Paltz is primarily responsible for recruiting freshmen and transfer students to the college. And we visit the local community colleges, all seven local community colleges in the area. And I've had to sit with students as I'm talking with them about transferring to New Paltz, going over their credits and then break the news to them that, sorry, but there's no campus housing. Many of these students choose to attend or local community colleges for a number of reasons. Either they want to stay home, they're not ready to leave home yet for financial reasons, they, they're not able to afford a four-year school, or maybe they're just trying to build up their academic profile. But a lot of them expect to come onto the New Paltz campus and have that residential experience and they're just not able to. I have had the personal experience of meeting with students on campus at an open house event or, or, um, general information sessions and have had students crying, literally crying in front of me. The mom almost in tears, again, because of the news of not being able to live on campus. They love New Paltz. A lot of them have visited this area. They've gone apple picking, they've gone pumpkin picking. And they want to be a part of our community, but again, they're not able to. New Paltz brings in about six hundred and fifty students in the fall and another three hundred and fifty students in the spring semester. And half of those populations, three hundred of the six fifty and about two, about one fifty of the three hundred and fifty students request on-campus housing. And again, we're not able to accommodate them. The lack of housing affects the involvement of these students on campus. In my own office, we've had student ambassadors and none of them have been transfer students. Since two thousand and seven, we have not had any ambassadors of the college who have been transfer students. And that's a loss to the college in terms of them being able to talk about their experiences and relate what it's like to be a New Paltz student. Certainly, Park Point will help in attracting transfer students, also graduate students and faculty and staff like myself who are not able to afford living in the New Paltz area. And I really encourage you to support development of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie.
Um, first off, I just want to thank
Um, first off, I just wanna thank the planning board for your service.
Oh, your name and address, young lady?
Just like the school board. Um, KT Tobin?
KT?
Yep, I live in the village at six Lincoln Place. Um, I am a graduate of SUNY New Falls sociology over twenty years ago. Uh, came here to go to school, never left. Um, but my husband and I do joke, we couldn't afford to live into the village, move into the village until we were over forty. Yes, I'm over forty. Um, but first off, I would like to speak as chair of the Campus Sustainability Committee. I am an employee of the college. Uh, the campi, the campus committee, the uh, sustainability committee is a committee of faculty, staff and students responsible for first and foremost drafting the campus sustainability plan, which is being submitted to the president this week. Via implementation of this plan, the college projects that by two thousand and thirty uh, campus CO2 emissions could be reduced by as much as eighty percent from two thousand and eight levels. Park Point is endorsed in this plan because included in this equation is the very significant reduction in our regional carbon footprint that can be achieved by having student housing adjacent to campus, potentially taking up to seven hundred plus cars off the roads traveling to and from campus every day. College long-term plans, including the sustainability plan and the facilities master plan and the landscape master plan, all commitments of the college, commit the college to protecting ecologically sensitive areas, to making better use of the natural features of the land, to expanding green space and eliminating impermeable surfaces where possible. Also, a direct quote from the facilities master plan, uh, this plan calls for buildings to be flagship examples of sustainability with LEED, Silver, Performance or Better, which the state requires it now, and visible examples of sustainability such as green roofs and glazing for passive solar energy. This is not only the most environmentally responsible path for the college to take, it would also result in substantially lower operating costs in the future. We do have a ways to go, but we do have a plan to get there. And there are very positive um, things that are happening already. For example, the Route thirty-two lot extension is going to be permeable pavement. The latest dorm renovation, Chris Bell Hall, was just certified LEED, gold. And my expectation is that Park Point will be in sync with these values and these plans, these green commitments on campus that have already been made and we're seeing implementation. And yes, students, the issues with the heating and lots of the things that you brought up were discussed by faculty, staff and students in the compilation of this plan. Um, I've been very happy that you worked with Spider in the town to, about wetlands and the placement of buildings. Um, building layouts, I know they were less dense, they're more dense. Maybe they could be even denser, um, as has been mentioned. Are there really um, rooms with single bathrooms? I thought there was at least two bedrooms um, up to a bathroom. Um, as far as open space, current long-term plans involve limited residential expansion on the campus footprint and much open space is being restored and enhanced. Um, as far as parking, um, I've been, I say a lot, both in the village and on campus, we don't have a parking problem, we have a walking problem. Um, parking space requirements must be reformed, reformed both in village law and in town, so we're not incentivizing driving. So I'm hoping that we can have less parking spots here. I'm hoping that that will go through um, the zoning. Um, yes, we want more permeable surfaces in this plan. Yes, we'd like to see more renewable energy sources. I love the idea of the reed beds. Um, interconnectivity for a lot of reasons has been coming up as a theme. This is something we've been talking about, um, I know on campus with staff and students for at least two years now. Um, I know the village planner expressed concerns about the connection at this point because we now have facilities and police here. Um, but it's um, in the plans that these buildings will be moved to a different place, so this can be a more through way. And yes, all those things about it being safe and walkable and what uh, bikeable, walkable needs to be done. Uh, moving to and from campus must be non-automobile on inside roads. I keep bringing up the idea that we should have some kind of solar powered trolley going back and forth, maybe we could get the solar car team on that. Um, as far as the pilot, um, I would be remiss as a former school board president to not also be sensitive to the lens of the taxpayer and um, I do think that the uncertainty of that makes people nervous. And I encourage all the players to continue to be transparent and tell us as much about how this is gonna unfold to alleviate those tax impact fears. I know that fire um, and police have signed off on this, the fire department, police department. We don't expect a big impact on the schools. Um, the president and others spoke of the economic impacts, which I, I think are very important. Um, the increased business generated by having more students as consumers who will now stay and be part of our community rather than the current come, go to class and leave. David Eaton and others have spoke about some issue, equity issues that are very important. Um, the town, there was some concerned voice that the town um, might not be able to handle this. The town passed a resolution in support of this project being a regional economic development priority project. So they've already come out saying that. Um, to wrap up, my experience as a social scientist who studies social protests and as a community activist who has participated in anti-development efforts, I'd like to reiterate my colleague Brian Obak's comments about the need to differentiate between good development and bad development. As environmentalists, we tend to be accustomed to preventing bad things from happening and we're not so experienced or used to fighting for good things. This project has the potential to be a very positive addition to our community and it's a great opportunity. Uh, I love the student energy in the room. Please continue to be a part of the process. Please be constructive, not destructive. Um, I strongly encourage people not to speak tonight, but to continue to be part of a constructive process that makes Park Point as sustainable and as great as it potentially can be.
Thank you. Joe Rutolo?
Yes, hi, I'm Joe Rutolo, I live in three Hassel Place in New Falls. Uh, I have two issues, uh, they start with the water for Park Point. Um, I had read in the draft environmental impact statement that the arsenic levels in the water tested were higher than the federal and state levels of acceptance. And uh, I know that arsenic is an accumulative toxic element that spoils those humans. And I'm also concerned that wells that are drilled on the site uh, may drain the aquifers of nearby regions uh, including the housing development uh, by Cherry Hill Road that draws well from the same water table. Uh, regarding the sewer treat, uh, sewer treatment plant, I was wondering if it will be used by the village? Uh, and if the water runs dry or the water is too contaminated from the wells at Park Point, if the village will have to extend its water supply to uh, the development? Uh, I'm also concerned about the uh, luxury or gentrified housing and that it will continue to uh, drive rifts between high and low income students. And uh, I'd like to know about the original plan to build smaller, uh, less luxury housing for graduate students. Um, my last question is what will happen uh, to the campus field queue on the south side of campus? That's the location, the campus garden. I'd like to know if that's going to be uh, full dose. Yep, that's it, thanks.
Uh, just, I generally don't answer questions on a public hearing on it, but this is not, has absolutely, I shouldn't say it, no. Doesn't touch any of this present campus property. It's adjoining to the campus property, so anything that's already existing on campus um, would remain on campus, whatever that issue is. I know where the gardens are and where you're talking about it and this, this is an adjoining property, not that property. Okay. Uh, Michael Smith? Ah, I can do one easy.
Thank you very much. Now, Michael Smith, the president of New Falls Regional Chamber of Congress at two fifty-seven Main Street, New Falls, and I live in the winter. And I see a lot on the outside and within the community and all the work that we do in the village and have in New Falls. And a college has a very competitive situation at hand and going forward, the housing, as we pretty much all agree here tonight, that it is truly needed. At the same time with the other issues, concerns that have already been talked about tonight, yes, it's still important to be addressed, but at the same time, after four years of this project, to be sure that any other issues are addressed as this project moves forward. Because we are very supportive that, that this excellent project will address at least partial fulfillment of the housing needs for the students and faculty. And the, the company has a very good experience in this type of development. And uh, we just encourage that, that the other needs are potentially to be addressed, but at the same time, we favor to keep moving ahead with the project so that this can be completed to address the concerns of today and for tomorrow.
Thank you. Robin Cole Laval? Robin?
Yeah.
Oh, there you are.
Hi, my name's Robin Cole Laval, I live at three Cicero Avenue in the Cherry Hill neighborhood. I came to New Falls thirty-nine years ago and had the privilege of being a first year student in Hapton Hall on campus. And in those years, I've never changed my one-two-five-six-one zip code. Um, I've lived in many apartments, rented many apartments and houses in the village and town. I've owned homes in the village and town. And I've never seen a project that I felt so positive about. Um, you know, full disclosure, I do work at the college, uh, but I also am a community member. And like Mary, I don't really, I feel that we are a great campus community and that's why people wanna be here. It's also my understanding, I don't know if anybody mentioned this statistic, that a percentage of uh, vacancies, that's considered low in any community, is a five percent rental vacancy rate. We are at three tenths of a percent vacancy rate in New Falls, if I have my numbers correct. And to me, I see this because I work with the transfer students and their parents from the time they're accepted by enrollment management through their first week of classes as associate dean of students. And not only do we lose students who leave orientation, they're here to pick their classes and they walk out, but they are just pleading with us for any way to have the residential experience. They want to be adjacent to the campus. I also believe that the students who live on and near the campus uh, will create less traffic. And I'm saying that living two blocks from campus, um, because they will be able to walk. We know when classes begin and end and we see the transfer students having to drive an hour home or half an hour away. Um, last but not least, I wanted to mention that there are different styles of housing and I know that there are faculty and staff that'll benefit as well. But the footprint and the layout I've seen is not luxury one-bedroom units. It's primarily four-bedroom, two-bath units. And most of the houses we live in, if we have four-bedroom houses, you like to have two bathrooms if there are uh, people living in four bedrooms. Also not mentioned is that this developer, Wilmerite, I've heard various presentations, can create some possibilities for students to defer financial aid, which is not available at some other things off-campus. So when we talk about affordable housing, the cost is gonna be just around what, just what the, within the range of what people pay to live on campus. And um, they will possibly be able to defer some of that cost, which you can't do in some of your other apartments, you have to pay for four or five hundred up front. This you could pay monthly and, you know, I think there's more flexibility for our students. So in these economic times, when it's only getting harder, I would love to be able to see people coming to New Falls and having an option that all of, almost every other SUNY school is offering now. You know, apartment-style housing on campus. When I go to meetings and I visit other campuses, we are so behind in this movement and I just wanna stick to my five minutes, but thank you.
Thank you. Mike? B L A H A N?
That's me.
There you are.
Hi, my name's Mike Blaha, I live at twenty-nine Hawk Hill Road in New Falls. I'm actually a graduate of SUNY New Falls as well, quite a few years ago. Uh, actually, I just wanted to echo the sentiments of Bob, what he was saying. I, I actually live uh, at the intersection of Cross Creek and Hawk Hill. And I'm concerned about the creek that runs right by that road and the water treatment plant that's there. We've had a few storms over the years and that creek does flood. I don't know what kind of studies were done uh, on this plan and I would like to look at the plan a little more closely to see what that is, but we have pictures that the flooding that occurs with this creek is extensive. And the damage that could be done, especially if there's more water runoff going into that creek, I'd be extremely concerned about. And that's, that's what I wanted to say. And I did hear some very interesting comments tonight that uh, I thought posed some good uh, perspectives from either side, so. Good meeting.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Roberto Lobianco?
Hi.
Oh, hey, ya.
My name's Roberto Lobianco, I live at one oh six Plains Road. Um, I'm a student senator and I'm also a transfer student. Um, I remember when I transferred to New Falls, um, I had that same difficulty in uh, getting student housing. I remember coming up to New Falls a couple of weeks after I found out I was accepted because I knew I needed a head start in uh, finding an apartment. And it took me a, a couple of months uh, to find the apartment. And I went through that uh, process of looking at student housing, um, that is, is inadequate um, in New Falls. But I was lucky enough to find a great house um, just outside the village. So I do, I wanna echo the sentiment that uh, some of the students and the administrators have brought up about the need for student housing. And I think the discussion should be re-remained. It shouldn't be about whether the project is needed, because I think um, the vast majority of people in the town and at the college can agree that it is needed, but it's about how do we get there? And some people have spoken about the potential for the project. There's potential including renewable energy. In the DEIS that I read through painstakingly in the last couple of weeks, renewable energy was um, excluded as a possibility um, because it would bring um, profits to the company. Um, it's an expense. I don't think that in two thousand and twelve, we should be talking about renewable energy as an expense. We should be talking about it as a benefit for ourselves and our future. If we want this development to last forty years, if we want it to last eighty years, we need to be thinking about how are we handing over this development to future generations of college students, of college administrators? Um, I know someone mentioned before, who will want this building um, in forty years? We're talking about using a bronze certification, that's the lowest certification, um, when state regulations would require a LEED Silver minimum. Um, today I got the email, maybe it was yesterday, that our college achieved gold certification on its recent renovation of the dorm. That's what we should be aiming for. It'll cost more. That's, I'm, it'll, it'll cost more, we have to, you know, face that fact. Uh, but we have to ask the developer to um, reach for that milestone and cut into your profits. I'm gonna have to, you know, have to tell you, cut into those profits and give us something that is sustainable, that will last us eighty years, that we can be proud of to hand over to future generations of college students. Uh, because what we're looking at now, it's not the best. And I think New Falls can aim for better. I think a lot of people have brought up the issue of all-inclusive utilities, that's a problem. All-inclusive utilities promote waste. Um, there should be a way to um, allow people to consume to a limit and then pay um, whatever you consume after that limit. Uh, I'm sure there's a way to implement such a system in this development. Um, the aquifers, this was mentioned already, I spoke to someone else tonight who was concerned about what impact would tapping those aquifers have on the local creeks? Um, are they connected to those creeks? Will they drain those creeks? Uh, will they drain the wells of residents in the area? Um, will rents be affordable? Um, I've asked this question, the best answer I've received is that prices will be situated somewhere between market prices of the town and res-hall rates. I don't know if that's affordable or not, that's for everyone else to decide. I know that in Syracuse and Rochester where similar developments were created by uh, Wilmerite, uh, the rents range from seven hundred to fourteen hundred per month. Um, so that's maybe affordable to some people, I don't know if it would be affordable to me. Unbiased, uh, that word came up a couple of times today. The DEIS is the best the state can do. It's not unbiased, um, it's the best tool we have, but it's not perfect. So I would definitely encourage um, to hire outside consultants, independent consultants, not hired by the developers, to check out those levels of arsenic um, below that three-foot level. Check out that water, uh, make sure that that's safe and not contaminated. And the last thing I'm gonna talk about um, is And the last thing I'm gonna talk about is the soil. I know the soil has been contaminated over decades of use as an apple orchard, parrot orchard. Many of the surrounding areas have that same problem. We can't just say we're not gonna develop any of those areas because they were former parrot orchards or apple orchards that have been contaminated. But I don't think the solution is to take that soil and bury it under sidewalks and asphalt and forget about it. That's not a tenable, sustainable solution. And we need to question whether taking that soil that's been contaminated with heavy metals and pesticides and just burying it under sidewalks that are being put into the development is healthy. And I'm gonna leave it at that. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Josh Simpson.
Right here. How's it going, everybody? I'm Josh Simpson. I'm a fourth-year student on campus at the college. And I am also the current president of the Student Association, but I can only speak as an administrator. There are a lot of concerns, which I'm not gonna repeat because that's dumb and we talk in circles. But I do feel that if these concerns are met and Park Point is built properly, then this project can only help the campus. Just through my position as president, not like God, but the president of the Student Association. I've been hearing about this project almost all semester, which it's my first time hearing about it, which is kind of saddening. But from what I've learned since two thousand four, students were asking for it. They had input, they had input. The Student Association did a survey. And it can only better campus life. And the only thing else I wanted to bring up was a concern about having Park Point become an exclusive housing development. I, just based upon like personal conversations I've had with the administration and what's been said here tonight, I don't think that that's in the goal of the campus, or like of SUNY New Paltz. And it's actually counterproductive if the idea of having Park Point is to bring students onto campus to create a more familial feeling, a community. So to have something like Park Point become an exclusive living community just doesn't, doesn't make sense. And I do not see it happening. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Zachary Rousseau.
Hi.
If I can do it, yep.
Uh, my name's Zachary Rousseaus. I live on campus, Cape Town Hall. I just wanted to mention a few very brief points. In regards to the subject of parking, this development, I just have a question as to how this would minimize traffic if the development itself encourages car use by having people bring their cars onto the development, pay no extra cost. So that's something that should be addressed. We heard a story earlier about a student who just really wanted to come to New Paltz. So this student was in favor of creating this development, but we shouldn't be willing to turn a blind eye to the environment just to create a development that could potentially be harmful and is harmful to the environment. There's been a common theme of students leaving campus crying. I understand that students are sad, but once again, we shouldn't, we shouldn't harm the environment because of our sadness of not to live on campus. Students on campus, I'm not sure about off-campus students, just recently, within the past three days or so, received an email that Chris Bell Hall received gold standard in regards to the environment. Why, why is the administration sending us these emails, creating us that we have this reputation of such high environmental, environmental standards? But then when we look to create more buildings, these standards that we pride ourselves on are not lived up to. Another point I want to mention, this development is marketed as affordable housing. As a student, I'm asking, is this really affordable? The two-bedroom apartment has two bathrooms in it. The four-bedroom apartment has two bathrooms in it. There's a pool and a hot tub, a fitness center, when the gym is just a couple, a couple, a walk away. This seems a little excessive, not affordable in the slightest bit. And then I just want to echo the idea that there are toxins in the ground. Why is this not being addressed to the extent that it should be? Well, finally, a side topic. Why has the administration not been as transparent as they should be? Students are just hearing about this this semester. Apparently, this has been going on for years. Why has there been this lack of transparency? And the administration should do more to communicate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to raise any questions or speak at this public hearing presently? Can I get your name and have you sign up?
I signed my name on that list.
Oh, wait a minute. Did I miss one? Sylvia?
Silver the Godka, yes.
Yeah, I missed it. I apologize.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I live at thirty Plaidkill Avenue. If you guys don't know where that is, it is directly across the street from the Villa Hall, the fire department, and very adjacent to Hasbro Park and the campus. I have a few problems with this development as someone who has lived here their entire life, moved here when I was four. Heavy metal poisoning is known to block receptors in the brain and lead to early onset Alzheimer's and other mental deficiencies later on in life. That's something that should be taken much seriously, much more seriously. College is about education, not necessarily totally about socializing. And half of New Paltz, the village, about half of New Paltz, the population, is students. So if you move off-campus, you're probably gonna be moving in with students. And the problems with our housing, the off-campus housing, should be addressed by the town and village board who are not, who are allowing black mold to still be in rented houses, who are allowing such terrible situations. That's not a problem of the fact that the space isn't there. It's a problem that it's not being enforced. That should be, that should be taken care of. Another thing, if the police department has already signed off on this, I live right next to the houses where multiple attempted rapes have happened. The police force is signing off that they have enough force to prevent people walking another even further distance, a whole different path from town. But they can't seem to prevent the students that are walking straight from the bars and pizza places in town to the campus, still getting attacked and sexually assaulted. That doesn't seem to happen. Also, as living across the street from the fire department, I hear that alarm go off every time, not just there's a car accident or a fire, every time someone burns popcorn in the dorm room. Huge problem for taxes, which are not paid by students. A few more things, let's see. No open bidding was made on this company that's contracting the, this whole development. If this is truly supposed to be a public and get for the greatest cost and the greatest environmental sustainability, shouldn't there have been an open bidding for all environmental-friendly economical development agencies that are out there that are actually booming and growing with the support of Obama, supporting sustainable energy and building all across the country? Yet we use a private contractor and private testing. The PCBs that were left in the dorms that were supposedly safe for all those students to live in. Soil testing, there were ten soil testings, but there was not really, independent study was done. But the, the map showing where they were tested was shown. But it's very difficult to find the results and the, don't know what happened about all that. Ah, yes, wetlands. If they're doing a full testing on wetlands, a test for the flooding and the capability of what's happening needs to be done every single season of the year, not just at one point. Because bernal pools, bernal ponds, salamanders, toads, frogs, all sorts of great little critters that only show up in certain parts of the year. So bernal ponds, they're gone right now, even though the testing hasn't been done. Most students that commute from the Hudson Valley, I know a lot of them, they decide to go to school that I grew up with or want to come to New Paltz. They usually commute and they probably will continue to commute because student housing is so expensive that they can't afford to live on campus. So they have to live at home and commute every day. And seeing that this housing development is going to be very luxurious, I don't think they'll be able to afford that if they can't afford the regular dorms. So more time needs to be spent on this. Just much more time needs to be spent before we can even have any jumps. Expecting to be developed in two thousand thirteen, that's pretty fast when we haven't even done enough testing to get everything done. I don't know. I'm rambling now. Have a good evening.
Thank you. And I apologize for missing you. I-
Oh, no. I'm glad that you called that out. I would've said something myself. Don't worry.
Is there anybody else who would like to make some comments on it?
I have a question. I was told because of that-
Can I get your name and-
Uh, I'm Rachel Agadka. I'm at, also at thirty Plaidkill.
I need it for the record. That's why I did it.
Okay. So my, I was, I was told that the, the public hearing would be kept open at least for another two weeks and perhaps beyond that. And I just want to make sure that this is the case, that, because of the fact that such short notice was given from the original date of the hearing, which was supposed to be on Tuesday, I believe there, I, I know I was around when you had laws that say like that the public, the property had to be posted and that you had to have a certain amount of advance notice for the hearing. So that was my first question. I just wanted to make sure that the hearing is indeed open and that, that this will occur in two weeks from today. Is that correct?
Correct. Well, November nineteenth, which is two weeks from Monday. We'll continue the public hearing on that. The reason we scheduled it for Friday was because of the weather last Monday and to get a start on it. But properly noticed, it will be November nineteenth. We'll make sure that adequate notification is made. So we will continue the hearing until then.
Okay. And another thing I wanted to mention was that, you know, when the developer first began to speak, he talked about, you know, the scoping sort of being a playing field and that now, that providing documentation for any further issues or to keep any issues open would be incumbent upon the people who were bringing those issues up. And I just wanted to say also that this, this does take time and that in order to really do a proper job with the D I S, we are gonna need some time in order to get that information in. Because in order to make a decision about this, you really need to have as, you need to do a thorough job because once the bulldozers come in, it's, it's all over. At that point, you've lost your ability to say, oh, what's going to happen with the water here? Or maybe we did need to do more soil testing or, you know, maybe we should take a long view of this development and say yes. You know, if we're really going to some lasting housing that means more to us than just say, providing to students and treating them like consumers, we should really go for a zero-dead energy. We should be making the investment in our community because this, this development is happening on our watch. It's happening on the watch of the students. And they should realize that this is their one opportunity to make this as good as it can possibly be. And, you know, even people who are here, most of you are, are speaking in favor of it, are in favor of the need at least for student housing. That doesn't mean we need to do it in the old way. And I feel like this is being done that way because you still have sort of this, you know, Mc-Town house. And the idea is that it's supposed to look like the village, but you can never create that. The houses in the village were built individually over time. You know, you can have your Mc-Town house and every fourth one has a gable coming out of it or something like that. But you're not actually recreating a streetscape or something like that. I think that we should, if our goal is really to make something sustainable, it should be carbon neutral. And we should go all the way. We should go with the solar. We should, we should reach forward. We should reach to the future. Because if we want this thing to be around in forty years, we want it to be something we're proud of. We wanna, don't want to just say, oh, well, you know, the students really wanted a clubhouse or, you know, a swimming pool or whatever. And I feel like it's, it's great to be able to provide these things for students. But, you know, in the beginning of the D I S, it actually says that students who don't live there won't be allowed to use it. And that, that is certainly a form of elitism. How could you have a facility that's this close to campus? And they're saying, well, it's a technicality really that it's not on campus. And that's true because it, the property really is adjacent to campus and it really is for students. And I'm not sure how legally you can have this sort of private thing and say, well, you know, only students can live here. Because then, you know, if it's actually in the town, it's not a student facility, then there are laws, I think, that prevent you from doing that. I mean, I just, I have a lot of questions that I think that we need time to ask these. I understand this has been going on for four years. But I would ask you, well, in those four years, how many times did you, you know, you, the planning board, who are volunteers and who are, you know, the most concerned people in a sense because, you know, this, this decision falls on you and it's very, very important? And I would say over those years, well, well, how many times did you meet with the developer and the property owner? How many times did you meet privately with them? And I'm not asking, you know, putting you on the spot or answering that right now. But I'm saying, well, then I would say, well, how many times did you meet at that time, over those four years, with community members or with students? So sure, this has been going on for four years, but it hasn't been going on in public. I feel like this is the first day, because this is the first public hearing, this is the first time you're, you're getting a response from people other than the developer, other than the administration. And of course, we want student housing. We want people to be happy. But it's, it's our job to question as many aspects of this as have an impact on the community as we can. Because, you know, once the bulldozers roll in, that's it. And so now, now's our opportunity. And I'm, I'm thanking you very much for giving us this opportunity to respond and, and begging you to give us as much of an opportunity as you can because we need it and then the community needs it.
Thanks.
And students need it. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to make any, yes, sir?
I'm Al Konigsberg. I've been on the faculty of the college for forty-five years now. I'm in the area of environmental geology. I just wanted to say that I'm really proud of the students who spoke tonight. This is, this is really a good learning opportunity for them to participate in a real situation. And I just hope that everybody together, the community, the college, the developer, do this very much-needed project in a way where our students can see, can judge by what we do and simply not what we say.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing you, well, if I can do it.
My name's Mike Patterson. I'm an employee of the college as well. My address is fifteen McInnes Place in Hudson, New York. I started employment at the college a little over four years ago. And I too really wanted to live in this community. I have a job that requires me to work nights and weekends and being close was important. I couldn't find a place to live that was affordable and I couldn't find a place to live that was close. And so I ended up living in Poughkeepsie for a period of time and making that choice. And because there just wasn't the capacity here in the village to accommodate what my needs were. In my role in the college, I, I work with transfer students quite a bit. At every transfer orientation, I sit down with a couple dozen or so students that are still a month away from school starting, don't know where they're going to live. And there isn't a capacity here in this town. And there isn't an opportunity for them to live locally. And so the best advice that I'm able to give those students is to consider Rosendale, Gardner, Tilson, all of the areas around our community. And, and they're not supporting our town here. They're, they're supporting the places that they're, they're living in. And, and those are really tough challenges for those students because they're relying on public transportation to get to campus because they don't have cars. And I, I have those conversations every time we do an orientation program. And, and their parents that are just really concerned for their safety and not being adjacent to campus is pretty troubling. And so I think it's really important that this project is there. And lastly, I'm also the advisor to the Student Association and have been engaged in many conversations along the way. And I've learned quite a bit about the project and a lot of evidence has supported this project being done the right way. And I believe it's been done the right way. I think the developers' coordination with the D E C, Department of Environmental Protection, the town's own wetlands consultant, I think are all signs that, you know, they're in partnership to make this the best possible. to make this the best possible facility as possible, and, and I, I think it's there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is John McEnroe. I work for the college, I'm the director of facility design construction. And it's been an interesting experience for me tonight to listen to many of my colleagues and students now using SUNY New Paltz as the gold standard to achieve the level that we want. Because we didn't achieve lead gold for Chris Bell Hall, we're happy with that. We are putting in chorus parking to reduce stormwater runoff. I've also had the benefit of going to the Rochester site that Wilmerite has done in the rest hall of the ground. Very sustainable, I was very impressed with the low-use fixtures, your plumbing supplies, your labs, your closets, low use in lighting, electricity, very high in terms of insulation quality factors. It's a very impressive site, and I encourage you to actually look for this. I've also had the benefit too of working on a ResLife master plan for previous colleges before I was here. Compared our master plan to a lot of the other institutions throughout the country. Students right now, they're looking for choices within residential halls, as I mentioned before. Right now on campus, most of our res halls offer a standard, many of us are familiar, standard rooms. What students are demanding now, what they've been demanding for about 20 years on campuses throughout the country, is options, which is recently renovated Chris Bell, it's went from rooms to suites, which is to evolve. They're also demanding apartments. If you look at campuses throughout, just the Hudson Valley, your Mayor's, the master hall, students are living in apartments, that's what they want. And so the idea that we're providing luxury apartments is not really the case when you're considering that a lot of students really desire apartment-style living. The last thing I want to point out is that if I position, I'm also responsible for maintaining the res halls. One of the problems that we have on campus is the fact that many of our freshmen, and some of us came back here, are tripled up in rooms right now. That's a problem. We can't do as much maintenance as we'd like because it's overcrowded. We have to schedule our renovations, maintenance, or when students subsequently leave in December, or that by the summer, because there's no one to put. On a personal level, I know, when I was a freshman, I ended up following the line, one room rate, and I didn't have one, so I can only imagine if it was like to have two, three students. So, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who... Yes?
Hi, I'm Thurston Chase, I live on campus in College Hall, and I'm a part of Student Association, I'm also a staff member, and I'm also on academic affairs, so I'm really involved in this school. And I love seeing like all this student input here, but I feel like there needs to be more dialogue with the students on campus, because there are a lot of people I know that don't know about this, and they really should. So there needs to be more dialogue with them before every, before things start moving on. That's my main concern.
Thank you. As I said before, we will continue this on November 19th, same time, same place, but go ahead, Matt.
Do you want to go further than that? That was my question. Will there only be one more meeting?
It depends on the turnout, number of people we have, as far as a public hearing goes. We try to accommodate it all. There's always an opportunity for written comments to, to be submitted. It doesn't have to be too formal, emails will take, if I know you. No, I won't kid. We'll, we'll accept any kind of input. Sometimes people just can't get to this location on the nights that we're having it and have some serious concern about it. Feel free to write those out and send them to us, and we'll take them into consideration also. So we're keeping the, the hearing open to discuss it more. Feel free, communicate with us, email, stop by, whatever, send your comments in. We will continue the hearing on November 19th, and then we'll see where we go from, from there. Yes?
How are our questions being responded to? I'm curious.
Generally, what we do at a public hearing is, the young lady in front of me has been taking a transcript of all the things you've said. And what we do is then review those, circle out those areas that came to questions that, things that were brought up. And between the developers and the planning board, we have, have to address those issues that have been raised. And that's part of our findings, that's part of why we want you here. There are things that we could miss, obviously there are things that we missed, we're only seven members reading it. So that's why we look for your input on it, and we'll go over the transcripts, pull out those questions, and address those things in our continuing study.
Right, thank you.
Yes?
I was just wondering where the transcription could be made available? Are they on a website or...
I haven't even gotten to that stage yet, but check with Kelly in a couple of days, and hopefully she'll know where they are. But we'll work on that and we'll let you know, okay?
Mike, I know a couple of weeks ago, I couldn't actually find the email address. Is that more intuitive now on the website where to send questions?
Yeah, send them to Kelly.
Well, I don't think your email's there either.
Well, one of the things is the town has to have the email system up and running, and this past week has, you know, it's been a bit of a problem here.
But we know where you live, Mike.
Yeah, unfortunately, you know where I live.
Town.
TownofNewPaltz, all one word, dot com.
Org.
Board. Dot org. So you don't have much I do, I just, all I do is respond to their emails. But we'll get that up and out for people, and I'll try to get posted out there, but O-R-G. And then Kelly gets it and sends it to me, so, but that's where we go. We will catalog all the comments, all the written comments that we receive too, and do the same thing that we'll do with the transcripts. Go over those comments, look through the questions that have been raised, and see have we answered those questions adequately for, for us. So if there are questions, please submit them, that's why we're asking you, we will hear. I thank you very much for your time, your patience, and living within the town hall confines. I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing to November 19th.
Motion made.
Okay, all those in favor?
I would ask the board to sit for a few minutes, we clear the room. A couple of things I want to go over.
Where is everybody?
Well, you know, people get set for meeting dates on, on, on the Mondays, and once you move off the Mondays...
I know.
Everybody runs into a conflict.
I know, it's Friday things.
And Friday, they were shocked that I was having it, but it's the only time I could get the town hall. I couldn't get it Monday.
Yeah.
I can't get the community center because of yoga class or something.
Yeah, I know, it's impossible. You have to book the community center like so far ahead.
Yeah.
Yeah. Are we done with the video?
Yeah.
I was like, it's always horrible.